Let's see.
What? Oh, no. Flush for wipes. Trash it. Don't splash it.
Test one, two, one, two, one, two.
I've been waiting for this for weeks. I gotta tell you, I am so ready to do this. I even have the bed ready.
Whoa!
So when you get home, we can get really dirty. Hey! Here you go. With all this compost, we're gonna have the best plants in the neighborhood.
What a beautiful day to celebrate the city of Orlando's first trail overpass as part of our Zero Initiative for bike safety and mobility for riders and pedestrians. Transit riders and commuters. More solutions, and this overpass is another lane.
No. Test one, two. Yep. Okay, now I can. No, I got that. Test one, two.
You can't even, you can't even match up.
Do it the old way, just yell. That's not good, but I hate to yell through all the evidence. Just to set an agenda.
It's really gone south on us. They can hear you, we can...
Malfunction with the audio, but we're gonna try to work through this. So, welcome to the January 13th, 2020 meeting of the Orlando City Council. This is the first meeting of the year, first meeting of the decade. We have three commissioners who were just sworn in. I was just sworn in, so it's a happy day, and we are... We are all on adrenaline from this morning and then crashed at noon, so we will make our way through. But there's a lot of exciting items on this agenda that I know a lot of people here see, so we're gonna try to make our way through. We're gonna take, begin today's proceedings with the invocation, and that's gonna be offered today by Reverend Emily Sterling, Executive Pastor at First United Methodist Church of Orlando. She has her Master's of Divinity degree from Duke Divinity School, and prior to moving to Orlando in June of 2019, she served as the Associate Pastor of Trinity United Methodist Church in Palm Beach Gardens. She's a native of Auburndale, Florida, and is glad to be home in central Florida, serving the city beautiful. After the invocation, the Pledge of Allegiance will be led today by OPD Chaplain Michael Meyer. Michael enlisted in the United States Army in 1969 at the age of 17. He served in West Germany for a year and then volunteered to go to Vietnam, where he served in the 101st Airborne Division and was wounded by a landmine resulting in the loss of both of his legs. He received a medical discharge in 1972 and has served as OPD Chaplain for 13 years, and he's also a chaplain for the United States Secret Service. Y'all may stand or remain seated.
Will you join me in this invocation? Source of wisdom and understanding. We give thanks for the city of Orlando, this beautiful land we call home. We give thanks for our residents and community leaders who work to make Orlando a safe place for all people to live, work, play, and learn. We give thanks for our mayor, city commissioners, and city employees who serve so diligently each and every day. Their service is seen and appreciated. We ask that these commission meetings be times of fruitful action with respectful conversation and wise decisions. We remember the work and legacy of Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. We give thanks for his life and for all that he accomplished to further the beloved community. We give thanks for all who impacted and influenced Dr. King. We give thanks for the advocates and peacemakers who have carried Dr. King's dream here into the future. This dream now passes to us. We seek to be trustworthy stewards of the dream. We commit ourselves to the work of justice, compassion, inclusion, and peace for all people. And we call upon the words of Reverend Dr. Howard Thurman, a Florida native and mentor to Dr. King. Open unto us light for our darkness, courage for our fear, and hope for our despair. Open unto us peace for our turmoil, joy for our sorrow, and strength for our weaknesses. Open unto us wisdom for our confusion, forgiveness for our sins, and love for our hates. May it be so. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first order of business is to call the meeting to order and make a determination of a quorum. So Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Gray.
Here.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Here.
Commissioner Stewart.
Here.
Commissioner Sheehan.
Here.
Commissioner Hill.
Here.
Commissioner Burns.
Present.
Mayor Dyer.
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum with all members present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We'll take up the meeting minutes from agenda review and city council meetings of December 9th, 2019. Motion by Commissioner Ortiz, second by Commissioner Stewart. All in favor of the motion indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and so the motion carries. We'll go right into awards, presentations, and recognitions, and we have two today. We're going to recognize our mayor's 2020 Dr. Martin Luther King Commission and proclaim MLK Holiday Week. So Marcia, would you do the honors, please?
Thank you, Mayor. I am delighted to do so. Good afternoon, Mayor Dyer and city commissioners.
Good afternoon.
And welcome to everyone who's here with us today. I'd like to congratulate Mayor Dyer and Commissioner Ortiz, Commissioner Sheehan, and Commissioner Burns on being sworn in this morning. Congratulations, and my team and I are excited to work with you serving the residents of Orlando. Since 1986, during Mayor Bill Frederick's administration, Orlando has recognized the federal holiday, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day, as an official holiday in the city of Orlando. We are proud that we were one of the first cities in Florida to do so. And for 34 years, through the administrations of Mayor Bill Frederick, Mayor Glenda Hood, and of course Mayor Dyer, Orlando's mayor has appointed a mayor's commission of civic leaders from the public and private sectors to plan, organize, lead, and implement a series of community engagement events that honor the legacy of Dr. King, that educate each generation about Dr. King's nonviolent movement for human and civil rights, and that amplify the achievements of our youth and our adults who are community servants, servant leaders, who exemplify Dr. King's vision and our MLK Commission's mission of service, equality, justice, peace, respect, and inclusion for all. Last night, in a very meaningful, meaningful interfaith service, Mayor Dyer and other elected officials joined the MLK Commission, our 2020 MLK Youth Humanitarians, our police and fire chiefs, other city employees, and nearly 200 residents who came together in observance of Dr. King's legacy and Orlando's commitment, our city's commitment, to becoming the beloved city that Dr. King envisioned. We hope that you will visit MLKOrlando.com to see all of the other events that are listed on what we call our MLK calendar. Want to make sure everybody picks one up. I think we have some outside. So, in Orlando, we believe, as Dr. King said, and I quote, "Hate cannot drive out hate, only love can, and we are proud to be a compassionate and inclusive city for all." It is now my pleasure to introduce the members of the 2020 Orlando Mayor's Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Commission, whose names you will see on the screen in front of you. Members of the Commission, if you would stand as I call your name. And I'm gonna start with Catherine Brownlee. Michelle Dorseyan. Brandy Hand, who I will introduce in a moment as our Chair of the Commission. Corey Johnson. And please note, the members that are representing their companies, Brandy Hand is representing Hand &amp; Chapman, PL. Corey Johnson is representing OUC, The Reliable and Sustainable One. Our signature sponsor, Lee Nemkopf, is representing Brio Properties. Edwana Andrews is representing University of Central Florida, our hometown university. Courtney Powell is representing Ace Applications LLC. Marisol Romney of Orlando Health is representing Orlando Health. Josh Bell is representing Valencia College's Peace and Justice Institute. Vicki Brooks is a member-at-large and has been on the Commission for more than a decade. Welby Boisram, Welby, help me, I need to make sure I pronounce your last name right, is representing the Greater Haitian American Chamber of Commerce of Orlando. Patricia Broussard, Dr. Broussard is here from representing Florida A&amp;M University's College of Law. Angela Foster is representing the Orlando Regional Realtors Association. We have Leon Gant, who's representing Wyndham Destinations. Christina Jackson is unable to be with us, she's a member-at-large. Marissa John, representing Baker Hostetler. Justin Kinsey is here representing Reef Technologies. Angela Lagos is representing Universal Parks and Resorts. Cliff Long is representing the Orlando Regional Realtors Association. Jean Martin is here representing the Orlando Magic. Don Affodeley is here from Fifth Third Bank. And Kelly Parkin is here representing the Pride Chamber. Jonathan Perry Esquire from Greenberg Twerk. Don't think Jonathan was able to join us today. Corinne Riley is here from Wayne Dench Charities Incorporated. Amon Thomas is here from JP Morgan Chase. Rick Whittit is probably not represented here today, but Amon is here from JP Morgan Chase. And Cody Woody from Orange County Public Schools. Ladies and gentlemen, please join me. And thanking our Commission, and I need to add Kyle. Kyle, who is here representing Walt Disney World. Kyle, how did that happen? She's been on the Commission for four years, but thank you, Kyle, for being here. Kyle Alexander. Now we can clap. Thank you all so much. And at this time, I wanted to mention that we will also have Brandy come up, and she's going to introduce our sponsors. Many of our Commission members are also sponsors. So some have representatives on the Commission and some don't, and we have some other sponsors here. And after that, just for, so you'll know, we're gonna take a photo after you read the proclamation, Mayor Dyer. We'll take a photo with you and the Commission members, and then with you and the sponsors. So thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I'd like to introduce the hardest-working, and I say this with no candor, the hardest-working woman and volunteer that the city has, Brandy Hand, Chair of the MLK Commission.
Thank you, Marcia. Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. Welcome back, Mayor.
Thank you, Brandy.
Welcome back, Commissioner Ortiz, Commissioner Sheehan, and welcome, Commissioner Burns. We appreciate the opportunity to be here today to share with you about another great season of MLK holiday events. We kicked off the season last night, as Marcia mentioned, with Mayor leading our faith leaders, the Chief of Police and the Fire Chief, and members of your staff through the candlelight vigil, the March to Shiloh for an uplifting service with great music and words. The Orlando Mayor's Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Commission strengthens our community by promoting Dr. King's legacy of service, equality, justice, peace, respect, and inclusion for all. As Marcia indicated, the Commission is made up of incredible outstanding volunteers from the public, private, and not-for-profit sectors. This is the 34th year of the Commission. Our city has been particularly blessed with incredible community leaders that served on this Commission, and including the additional members that you gave us this year. Part of our work is raising funds to support the various community events. I believe we are pleased to report a record this year. We have 45 cash and in-kind sponsors. The names of the 2020 sponsors are on the calendar, on our website, on the back of the MLK t-shirts, and our major sponsors will be shown on the screens above. We'll also be displaying those at all the community events. We are delighted that several sponsors are here with us today. Time doesn't permit me to name them all, but we want to especially recognize OUC, our signature drum major sponsor, The Reliable and... Our humanitarian awards service sponsor, Walt Disney World, and our equality sponsor, Wayne Dench Charities. Would all MLK Commission sponsors please stand so that we may thank you? The Commission has supported in some way almost three dozen events that began Friday and will conclude in six months. Yes, I said six months. We are pleased to support a new event this year, the Dream Series. It is a community dialogue of six sessions facilitated by the Peace and Justice Institute. The workshops will focus on our shared humanity with an exploration of... The workshops will focus on our shared humanity with an exploration of race, religion, gender, sexual orientation, bias, and privilege. Our ongoing program that we are taking to a higher level this year is our annual free MLK concert that will be held this Saturday evening. It will be directed and conducted by Grammy Award winner Dr. Jeffrey Rudding, and will feature the world-renowned Aeolians from Oakwood University and an additional choir of over three hundred voices. It is truly an event not to be missed. As evidence of Dr. King's call to service, the MLK Commission is sponsoring multiple great days of service on the King Holiday in the Paramore Community this year. It will also include a voters' registration drive. We will partner with FAMU on their annual cleanup with our closing celebration. There will be ceilings for civil rights at Rock Lake. We anticipate there will be more than eight hundred community volunteers, and unlike last year, we're not going to have a freeze. Information for all the events may be found on the city's website or direct link through the MLKOrlando.com site. The Commission has had a lot of partners with all of these activities, nonprofit organizations and the city staff. We've continued our longstanding partnership with the Interfaith Council of Central Florida, the Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity Incorporated, the Southwest Orlando J.C.s, Walt Disney World, and the Central Florida YMCA. We are most grateful for their help, and also, Mayor, for the help of your office, each council member's support, the Office of Communications and Neighborhood Services, Neighborhood Relations, sorry, Families, Parks, and Rec, Human Relations, partnering this year with Multicultural Affairs in Georgina, and of course, our lead support, Marcia, Reggie McGill, Walter Hawkins, Lizette Feliciano, and Sylvia Wills. We also would be remiss if we did not thank retired Bob Fish for his invaluable support with our great day of service. Thank you all. Mayor, as your Commission, we continue to follow your call to us to increase awareness and participation for all citizens as we continue to work on keeping Orlando the city of unity and inclusion. We have new wristbands and pins for each council member, and of course, your t-shirts, and they will be delivered to your respective offices. Your Commission thanks you for your great ongoing support and recognition of the importance of our mission and the work of heart that we do to serve our community. At this time, I understand you have a proclamation.
I do, Brandy. Thank you, and thank you to the Commission for all the hard work they do, not just during the course of these ten, ten days to two weeks, but over the course of the whole year, raising money and preparing for these couple of weeks. And last night's service was extremely moving and well-done, and I appreciated the opportunity to participate in that. Proclamation, City of Orlando Office of the Mayor, whereas January twentieth, twenty-twenty is a national holiday to observe the birthday of Dr. Martin Luther King Junior, one of America's greatest visionary leaders, who peacefully created civil rights activism in our nation through nonviolent means. And whereas since nineteen eighty-six, the Orlando Mayor's Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Commission has worked diligently to promote Dr. King's legacy of service, equality, justice, peace, respect, and inclusion for all in Orlando. And whereas 2020 marks the twenty-first anniversary of the Orlando Mayor's MLK Youth Humanitarian Award Program, which has honored more than a thousand outstanding students from Orange County Public and Charter Schools who are selected by their schools because they exemplify Dr. King's ideals. And whereas the City of Orlando celebrates and promotes Dr. King's incredible legacy, we encourage residents to participate in the MLK Holiday activities and programs in sharing the efforts to continue to make Orlando a welcoming, inclusive community. Now therefore, we, Buddy Dyer, Mayor of the City of Orlando, and Jim Gray, Tony Ortiz, Robert F. Stewart, Patty Sheehan, Regina I. Hill, and Bakari Burns, Commissioners of the City of Orlando, hereby do proclaim January twelfth through the twenty-first, two thousand twenty, as Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Holiday Week in the City of Orlando. Thank you, Commissioner. Okay. Tighten up. Tighten up.
Thank you very much. It's a sponsor, and our other sponsors are present, please join us. Our sponsors that have been here on our program, the MLK Commission, please join us. I won't miss anyone. If you have a great time, bad, please pull it off. Thank you. Thank you very much. And our other sponsors are present, please join us. Our sponsors that have been here on our program, the MLK Commission, please join us. I won't miss anyone. If you have a great time, bad, please pull it off. Thank you. Thank you very much.
I got a chance to back. Oh. No, I got it. Yeah, that should, that should.
That's mine.
Oh, that's yours.
You guys want to make your way out, it's a good time to do it.
One of the things that we can be really proud about and reflect upon is our Greenworks Orlando Initiative that we launched back in two thousand seven, and our goal was to become the greenest city in the southeast United States. And we joke a little bit about OUC, saying they're the reliable and the sustainable one, but it is true. And it would be difficult for us to do the work that we're doing without the collaboration and partnership of our utility. Of course, we own them, but still, they work hand-in-hand with us to make sure that we're working hard to implement strategies to improve public health, quality of life, protect our natural resources and the environment, and take bold action on climate crisis and diversify our economy, all aspects of creating a sustainable and resilient city. And while our federal government has abdicated the role of taking the lead on these types of measures, it's fallen to the local governments, and I'm proud that our city is one of those cities that stepped up in a major way. So I'm very excited to share that we've received international recognition from the U.S. Green Building Council for their Lead for Cities certification, which formally endorses our leadership in advancing the many initiatives that we've implemented to create a more sustainable Orlando and Central Florida. So I'm going to call on Chris Castro, our Director of Sustainability and Resilience, to offer some insights and introduce today's special guest. Chris?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Congratulations once again. As Mayor mentioned, beginning back in two thousand and seven, Mayor Dyer and our city elected officials affirmed the city's commitment to move towards a more sustainable and resilient city by establishing Greenworks Orlando. And if you fast-forward thirteen years to now, 2020, I think that we have a lot to be proud of. Due to our collective sustainability efforts, we have completed dozens of policies and programs that are working to enhance our community's quality of life, to enhance environmental stewardship, to create green job opportunities, to take action on the climate crisis, and to set an example for other municipalities and local governments who are striving to operate in a more sustainable manner. In April of last year, two thousand and nineteen, Orlando applied and was selected by the U.S. Green Building Council as one of fifteen cohort cities to essentially pilot a new type of certification called the Lead for Cities Version 4.1 Certification, building off of arguably one of the most widely and recognized sustainability rating systems in the world. This certification was funded thanks to Bank of America's Charitable Foundation, which we have representatives of today, and really provides the city's an evaluation framework for the impact that we're making, really performance around social, economic, and environmental conditions on a citywide level. Now, many of us are pretty aware of LEED certifications for buildings, right? The Orlando Police and Fire Headquarters are both LEED Gold. The Amway Center is the first LEED Gold mixed arena in the entire country, Dr. Phillips' Center for the Performing Arts, and literally hundreds of other buildings around the city. And it wasn't just because of our actions, but it's also including the partners, OUC and Lynx and GOA, and many of our community businesses, nonprofits, and residents who have truly worked with us to move the needle. This certification looked at over a hundred key performance indicators and metrics that included topics such as natural systems and ecology, urban forestry, clean energy, water, multimodal transportation, local food systems, but also some of the other things that people don't necessarily tie to sustainability, things like education, and public health, and social equity, and community safety, and overall prosperity. These are aspects of creating a livable, walkable, sustainable city. Many of us know that I can be up here for over an hour talking about the stuff that we've been doing, and so I will spare you in doing that, and maybe one day we'll do another workshop here. But I'd like to welcome the President and CEO of the U.S. Green Building Council, Mr. Mahesh Ramajan, to share some remarks about the Lead for Cities designation and why we received this. And then following that, we'll do a group photo with not just the Greenworks members and staff, but also our partners in the community that helped us achieve this certification. So without further ado, please help me welcome Mr. Mahesh Ramajan.
Good afternoon, everybody. Thanks for inviting me here. Thanks, Mayor. It's a special day, so in the beginning of the decade, in the first meeting at Orlando, I'm here with all of you. It is clear, for more than ten years, Orlando has been committed to developing sustainability programs and initiatives that are focused on improving quality of life and well-being for its residents. From green building to energy efficiency financing to waste reduction, Orlando has taken important steps to make the city more sustainable and resilient. These efforts and more are helping to prioritize sustainable economic growth and development and ensure equitable access to the resources and services all residents rely on. It is the work of cities like Orlando that are proof the U.S. Green Building Council's vision for a sustainable future for everyone within the next generation is not just some far-reaching ideal. As Chris pointed out, in 2017, USGBC launched two new certification programs, expanding our Lead for Buildings to Lead for Cities and Lead for Communities. These programs help cities and communities develop responsible, sustainable, and specific plans for green energy, water, waste, transportation, and many other factors accountable for our quality of life. Our theory is this: what gets measured, gets done; what gets done, gets improved; what gets improved, gets replicated. So here we see that happening right here in Orlando. In fact, one of the important comment I want to make about what Chris said was that the City of Orlando got this thing done in less than, I would say, three to four months, and it's not easy to accomplish that within three to four months. So Chris, actually, I heard somebody quoting Chris, saying he would not recommend that to anybody else. So, yeah, so he got it done, so that's what I'm thrilled about. And thanks to the Mayor, the city has not only achieved the Lead for Cities certification, but it has achieved the gold level, so Lead for Cities, that has become a gold city. So what excites me even more is that City of Orlando is now part of the network of more than hundred LEED-certified cities and communities around the world. You're setting a fine example of what's possible, not just right here in this wonderful country, but also around the world, particularly when our national leadership is at this point of time tentative about these decisions. So thank you for your remarkable leadership. And I would like to thank the city's Sustainability and Resilience Team, led by a longtime member of the USGBC community, Chris Castro, as well as colleagues, Ian Lahiff, Mike Hess, and Michael Omen for driving these efforts. And my deepest appreciation to Mayor Dyer for recognizing the importance of this work and supporting the team in their endeavors. But while this certification lauds the leadership of Mayor and the entire team who made this achievement possible, it is important to realize that true leadership is not possible without partnership. In order to create real change, we must recognize that none of us can do this alone. Through more than a million dollars in grants, Bank of America is helping cities and communities across the U.S. pursue LEED certification and take meaningful climate action. A special thank you to Senior Vice President Juan Amo and the regional team for their partnership and for being here with us today. So at this time, I'd like to invite Juan from Bank of America to join me in presenting Mayor Dyer and the City of Orlando with a certificate recognizing their achievement as a LEED Gold City. Thank you for your leadership, and congratulations.
And as mentioned, we'd like to welcome all of the Greenworks staff, fellow city employees, and partners who helped us achieve this certification to come with us to the front as well. Please join us up front for a photo. Commissioners, we'd also like for, like for you all... What's that?
Perfect. And can we also have the Commissioners stand behind you?
Sure. Chair, you can do it. My chair's coming down. Watch him still. What a good-looking crew. Especially you.
Something you Mayor recognizes.
You have a green secret.
I have a green heart there.
Let's move into the Mayor's update. So I have just a few things, and I'll trim it down just a little bit in the sake of conserving a little time. This is, of course, the first meeting of 2020, first meeting of the new decade, and I want to congratulate Commissioner Ortiz and Sheehan again for winning reelection, and Commissioner Burns, who was sworn in today. Congratulations. We look forward to a fantastic year and look forward to serving with you and all the things that you'll add to this Commission. There's a good group here, and we have a pretty light agenda today, so starting off pretty easy. On a more somber note, we continue to send our love and support to Puerto Rico as they recover from another series of earthquakes. We stand ready to offer our assistance in any way that we can after this disaster, and we do anticipate that we will continue to have more people that are traveling from Puerto Rico and making their, at least temporary, home here in Central Florida, so we'll do everything that we can to accommodate and assist. Tomorrow, Commissioner Sheehan and I are looking forward to working with the Pride Chamber of Commerce of Greater Orlando to host our first-ever Doing Business Workshop for the LGBTQ+ community. And last year, we became the first city in Florida to recognize LGBTQ+-owned businesses through a certification process. So if you're interested in participating, take a look at Orlando.gov for information. We recognize the MLK Commission and everything that's going on there, so I'm going to just mention two things that are on the agenda today. And number one is Mayor's Matching Garants. We have twenty-two Mayor's Matching Grant projects that our citizens and neighborhood associations are partners in, everything from neighborhood safety features to enhancing the beauty of our neighborhood, after-school mentoring programs, increasing access to education, arts, career exploration, athletic programs for young residents, and I know we have a lot of representatives from the organizations that are here. So if you would stand up and be recognized, we deeply appreciate that, and we want to thank you for what you're doing in your community. And then the other item that I would like to mention is... And number one is Mayor's Matching Garants. We have 22 Mayor's Matching Grant projects that our citizens and neighborhood associations are partners in, everything from neighborhood safety features to enhancing the beauty of our neighborhood, after-school mentoring programs, increasing access to education, arts, career exploration, athletic programs for young residents. And I know we have a lot of representatives from the organizations that are here. So if you would stand up and be recognized, we deeply appreciate that, and we want to thank you for what you're doing in your community. And then the other item that I would like to mention is B8, and that relates to the Dr. Phillips Center for the Performing Arts. They're well on the way to completing Stage Two. And thanks to our partners at Orange County Government and the staff of the Dr. Phillips Center, we are going to be able to use a little bit more tourist development tax to fill the gap from some funding that got vetoed at the state of Florida and some additional things that they're adding into Phase Two. So that's on our agenda today and on the county's agenda tomorrow. Kathy, you're out there somewhere, right? She was there? Okay, Cecilia's there. Thank you. And I see Commissioner Uribe out there as well, so thank you for everything the county's done to support the Dr. Phillips Center. And with that, we will move on to the Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda is a number of items that are acted upon through a single vote of council. We give each of our council members an opportunity to comment on the Consent Agenda and update you on important happenings from their district. We rotate the order that we do that in. Commissioner Sheehan is up first today, but I would like to let Commissioner Burns know that he does not have to be quite as long as the former district commissioner used to be. Like, we're not particularly interested in what you had for breakfast or for lunch, but we look forward to your insight. Commissioner Sheehan?
Thank you, Mayor Dyer. And it's actually kind of cool to get to go first today because when I first got elected in 2000, and nobody expected me to get elected, the first person to come to congratulate me was Commissioner Page, who is Commissioner Burns' uncle. So it's just kind of cool to be able to be here to welcome you today here, sir. So I look forward to working with you. And yeah, I think this is a very, very exciting time for all of us. I would also like to thank the staff of FPR and the Downtown Development Board and Thomas Chapman, because when I went to Italy a couple of years ago, I came back with some pictures and fussed about how we don't have beautiful Christmas decorations like some of these other cities. And I have to tell you, the DDB did an amazing job of decorating Lake Iola. Yeah, please, give it up. I mean, they said that Lake Iola was so full of people on Christmas Day that you couldn't move. So what I'm saying is the Downtown Development Board funding is to create activity in downtown, and that's exactly what those Christmas decorations did. Well done, team. That was fabulous. And you know what? It was great. All I have to tell you, my favorite city in Italy that I went to was Gubio, and they talked about the lights. And I'm like, what are they talking about? They talked about how the old men of the town had laid out all these lights, and I couldn't tell what they were doing, what they're talking about, until I left the city at night, and they had actually made the outline of a Christmas tree on a mountain. We don't have mountains, Thomas, but I'm just saying. Gubio's only got like 500 people. But you know, y'all knocked it out of the park. It was just really amazing and beautiful in downtown. I also want to give some love to the Mayor's Neighborhood Matching Grants, the Girl Scouts, Citrus Council, the Fringe Festival, the Lake Iola Historic Neighborhood Association, Sign Toppers, that's going to look great in the neighborhood, Orlando Philharmonic Orchestra, and UCF, great things happening in my district. I also want to thank Orange County for the additional $19 million from the tourist development tax. And also want to thank the tourism industry, who actually pays that tax. So we want to thank them for investing in our community as well. And on the agenda today, also Item C13, this is Mosaic Hair Studio. They're doing a second location. This is a small business facade grant, wonderful small business in District Four that's expanding and creating jobs. And on the information only, something special to me, I had a meeting on December 4th with Mayor Dyer and asked to designate a portion of the Orlando Urban Trail to recognize Wendy Chioji. Wendy had her personal journey battling cancel, but she was also a long-term news anchor, wonderful human being. And when she was undergoing cancer treatment, and y'all know she was a heck of an athlete, there were times she used to have to stop on her bike ride between Warehouse Road and Coy Drive. And Mayor Dyer has generously agreed to name that portion Wendy Chioji Way. So Mayor, I want to thank you for that. We're going to be putting a future art element in, and Wendy's favorite word was defy, so we're going to be putting something up there that says defy. So thank you for that, Mayor, and that's all I had today.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll move to District Five, Commissioner Hill.
Thank you, Mayor. I also like to say welcome back, Mayor Dyer. The best is yet to come. We've moved so much forward under your 20 years of leadership, but I know there's still more work to do, and I'm just so excited to work beside Commissioner Ortiz and, of course, my sister from another mother, Commissioner Sheehan, which has been a great mentor to me these last six years. I am truly excited, Commissioner Stewart, to welcome a Jones High Tiger to the council, which Bakari Burns. Bakari is an stranger here at City Hall. He has been a volunteer that sat on boards to help us in our municipal planning board. And also, you have always been in District Five, helping to create affordable medical services for the underserved or those without services. But Bakari, I also have something special that I share with him. His mother was my Algebra I and Algebra II math teacher. So if I don't get the numbers right sometime on my budget, blame Bakari's mom. So I also would like to congratulate our PKZ Black Bee Honey Kids, Bear in Paramore, that celebrated two years of locally grown honey, and they're nationally known. So congratulations to our young entrepreneurs there in the Paramore community. On this Friday evening, myself and Commissioner Burns attended our Orlando Youth Football League that is a city league, and Bakari received his first championship ring. This is mine. I got about 10 of them. My kids are really excelling, but this year they did a little something different. And I like to say, Lisa, your family Parks and Rec team rocks. And the job that they do with those kids here in the City of Orlando and our urban core are amazing. You know, we're not just creating athletes, we are creating scholars. These kids have to achieve in academics as well as on the field. We're creating leaders. So thank this council and mayor for all the fundings. I think Parks and Rec is almost fourth on our budget with the fundings that we put throughout the community. Since I am the champ of city football, I have my belt. So I had five teams that actually won the championships, or they were runner-ups. And I try to make sure every Saturday that I'm out there on that football field cheering not just District Five kids, but all the youth here in our city football league. So again, kudos to our recreation department under the leadership of Lisa Early and Rodney Williams. Of course, you know, we have created the Paramore Church Street Main Street expansion, and I'd like to give a special thanks to Sherri Galt and Pauline Eaton for the phenomenal work that they have done with helping to organize that. We had our first community meeting, and we had about 60 people that attended and 50 volunteers signed up for different phases of our Main Street. So thank you to those volunteers and Sherri and Pauline for assisting us move the Church Street Paramore Main Street forward. 1212, OPD, thank you Chief Cologne Ralone for all the work that you and the men and women of OPD had. We had a phenomenal time that evening. We had over 300 kids that were served with toys, bikes. The men and women of OPD served all the families. No one got up, and they served them literally hand and foot. And I just want to let you know how much that means to our community. That's true, what I think, community building and community policing, and you have always done a phenomenal job. And I just want to thank you for your continued partnership. I know on Wednesday evening, we'll be back in the Paramore community and having a community engagement session, which those not just in Paramore, but throughout the city will collaborate with OPD and talk about some of the things, real talk, some of the issues that they see and some of the things that might be enhanced, but also to celebrate the work that is being done there. I think the mayor said it best earlier, one of the, well, the most important thing here at the City of Orlando is safety. And I want to thank your men and women for what occurred Thursday morning, early Friday morning here in the downtown core, and how you all deescalate a situation that could have gone terribly wrong when we had someone parading downtown Orlando with an AK-47 shooting in the air, and no one got killed. And neither did the suspect get killed, and that showed great, great leadership from our men and women. Can we applaud that? Well, Mayor Dyer and myself cut another ribbon there in the Mercy Drive Coroner at Villages on Mercy. Villages on Mercy is a special project. Usually, we have been attacking affordable housing here in the central Florida region, primarily in the Paramore area, but now we have extended west there in the Mercy Drive Coroner, and it has been mixed income usually. But this was the first project, and then we have another that will be soon breaking ground with Fair Lawn there where it's all affordable. This one was special. Many of the families that moved into Villages on Mercy had been homeless for years, and they were able now to find housing and lodging with wraparound services so that we can break that generational poverty. And those families becoming, when we start saying, self-sustainable, if there's such a word, but self-sufficient. I know what the word is, but I was trying to play off the reliable one. So I'm excited about that. That was 166 units, all affordable. 50% of those were for homeless families. This next cohort from Pepetree 1 and Pepetree 2 will be 50% homeless. Families will live there along with those that are 30 and 40% of the AMI. And that was that niche that has been so hard to ascertain, is those that are 30 and 40% of the average median income. When you do the numbers, that mean that they make lower than $17,000 a year. So thank you, council. That could not have happened without you, without giving the funds to make those purchases and then voting on the right partners to develop those properties. So thank you all. I celebrate you for that. Looking for more of your support in 2020.
Commissioner, just let me interrupt for one thing. Last Friday, I was pretty shaggy, and I went to get a haircut, and I had Sammy with me, but I was walking back, and there's a young lady that you've probably seen in our downtown. She's lost her left leg, and she's in a wheelchair. And she caught up with me and said, "Thank you, Mayor, and thank the commissioners. I just moved into Village on Mercy." And she is previously homeless, but she recognized that it was the city that had helped make that happen.
Oh, wow. That's good stuff. So there's two items I do want to discuss. I won't go any further. I give Commissioner Burns his time in shining the sun for the first time. I don't want to turn it to my past, Mr. Six Commissioner. But there's two very important things on our council agenda today, and that is accepting the minutes from the HPP Board, where we will make the Black Bottom Church there in Paramore a historic landmark. If you remember, right before the holidays, the roof collapsed, and we were able to now today pass this, and this will assist them with getting some national funding to help rehab their church, we're in hope of that. And the second is the DXV development here in the Church Street Coroner of Paramore. I'm excited about that. That is going to create some much-needed housing for some of our young professionals. I do believe in also some retail space for small businesses here in the Paramore area. The developer has been very gracious to go into the neighborhoods there and work with some of the community businesses, and he's going to also make sure, and I tell you, it's not a city project, it's a private project, but Mayor and council, he says that he's going to model his development after the blueprint and hire some of the local minority companies here, also offering some retail space as an incubator for small minority businesses there in the Paramore area. So I celebrate this project, and I'm looking forward to working with the developer. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Burns, your first time.
Yes. Well, good afternoon and to Mayor, fellow commissioners. First, I'd like to say thank you for your service to the great city of Orlando, and I really look forward to working alongside of you all to do the business of the people. And Mayor Frank and Denise, I'd just like to say thank you to the staff, as well as more specifically, the city clerk staff that have just rolled out the red carpet for me, where it really welcomed me and really got me acclimated to City Hall. So I want to say thank you again to all the staff. You are doing a great job, and I look forward to serving alongside of you all.
Is that it? Okay. At least this time, man. Thank you. Commissioner Gray?
My new favorite commissioner. Usually, I've got to figure out when to wake up after Santa, but not you. That is good. Well, I don't have a mic, so I'll be brief, but Commissioner, welcome. We're thrilled to have you, and congrats, Mayor, Commissioner Ortiz, Commissioner Sheehan, Commissioner Hill, and Commissioner Stewart. I did a lot of clapping for you all this morning, but we're thrilled. Congratulations and welcome. We're glad to have you. Since it's been a while, Ed, how we doing over there? You getting ready? It's been a while, but I wanted to take just a minute to show a few slides. We did our Christmas kid shopping with our Citrus Square Rec folks right before the holidays, thanks to the Nava Lo Foundation. And if you haven't seen it, it's really neat. All these kids are given $100 gift card, and they're turned loose to purchase whatever they want, as long as it's age-appropriate. But it's kind of neat to see kids without parents or big brothers or sisters telling them what they can buy, and it's across the board. So it's kind of neat. But here's a few pictures of that event. Thanks to our team for getting up early, 5:30 in the morning. We had to kind of beat the other Christmas rush to get out there, but we all had a good time. Hopefully, there's no pictures of me with Santa there. But anyway, it was a good time, and we look forward to doing it again next year, so. Ed, tell me when you're done. You got up early, so I want to make sure all your pictures get shown. There we go. No, not this year. No. There we go. Great picture, Ed. Thanks. That was a good one. You're dismissed, Ed. Just wanted to say, upcoming, a week from this Saturday, we will have our ribbon cutting on our second, what I call, super park out on Dowden Road near the airport. And thanks to everyone here and our staff, but that's a welcome addition to the southeast part of the city. As you may know, the park, the one that we opened several months ago was multipurpose fields. This one has four baseball softball fields, so we got a little different activity for folks to enjoy. Super-sized playground, a walking trail for those that enjoy the walk, a concession stand, and permanent restrooms. That was my one wish, no more portalets, we want permanent restrooms, and we've got them. It's a beautiful park. So I welcome everybody to join us a week from this Saturday, 9:00 a.m., for the ribbon cutting out in Lake Nona. Last thing I would say, kind of on a sad note, not sure how many folks knew him because he really kept under the radar, but we lost a good one in Mr. Bob Pacerne, who had a medical emergency and passed. But Bob was an apartment builder by trade, but a real philanthropist by heart. And he was the guy that would open the checkbook and write the checks to help folks that were in need. So we lost a good one there, but attended the funeral. I think Commissioner Ortiz was there and some of the other staff. But anyway, just want to say, that's a sad note, but he did good work for us. On the agenda, two things real quick. Mayor's Matching Grant A3, want to thank all the folks who are here for what you do. Thing I love about it is a matching grant, which means you folks are putting in, you know, time, treasures, and talents in some form, so thank you for doing that. Glad we can help. And then on C1, just wanted to... So I welcome everybody to join us a week from this Saturday, 9:00 AM, for the ribbon cutting out in Lake Nona. Last thing I would say, kind of on a sad note, not sure how many folks knew him because he really kept under the radar, but we lost a good one in Mr. Bob Bissern, who had a medical emergency and passed. But Bob was a apartment builder by trade, but a real philanthropist by heart. And he was the guy that would open the checkbook and write the checks to help folks that were in need. So we lost a good one there, but attended the funeral. I think Commissioner Ortiz was there and some of the other staff. But anyway, just want to say, that's a sad note, but he did good work for us. On the agenda, two things real quick. Mayor's Matching Grant A3, want to thank all the folks who are here for what you do. Thing I love about it is a matching grant, which means you folks are putting in, you know, time, treasures, and talents in some form, so thank you for doing that. Glad we can help. And then on C1, just wanted to clarify, today what we're approving, or hopefully will approve, or I'm recommending, is the approval of the minutes of the MPB. The developer was kind enough to allow us to defer that from last month's council meeting, so I could attend a second community meeting, hear from the neighbors. So this one is approving that. We still got to go through the approval process, but this is kind of the first step. So with that, mayor, I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Ortiz.
Thank you, mayor, and congratulations. Congratulations, Commissioner Sheehan, and welcome, Commissioner Burns. This is gonna be fun. Happy New Decade to everybody else. We're starting a new decade with new dreams and new goals, and hopefully I get my PKZ on the East Side, right, Lisa? So we have a lot to look forward to. And talking about the East Side, let's see, we had the Three Kings event, which is similar to what you all were talking about, about giving kids an opportunity to receive more gifts. Now, in Latin America, the Three Kings Day is a little different, because for Santa Claus, you get a wrapped gift. For Three Kings, you know, the Kings were a little poor, so you don't get the wrapped gift. You still get the gift, you just don't get it wrapped. So, but it's pretty fun. And the NLPOA, National Latino Peace Office Association, great organization from the Orlando Police Department, chiefs and all those involved, sheriffs was also there. Commissioner Stewart, there was other people that weren't to the event, but by the time I got there, you were gone. But it was a great event, many kids, many gifts, and it's another opportunity for the community to come together. So thank you to the NLPOA and our guys from the Orlando Police Department, and all those who share this great dream for our kids. I believe this was our 17th, 16th? So, yeah. The chief was a president of the association back then. I'm not going to say how back then, but it was, so. Anyhow, on Saturday, January 11th, I attended the Share Your Talent Art Extravaganza presented by the Alive Artists Group and the Platforma Group. We bring the arts to the East Side, finally, with this awesome new initiative. Every second Saturday of the month, from 2:00 PM to 5:00 PM, we welcome the public and those of all ages to stop by the Englewood Neighborhood Center to become immersed in the arts. Share Your Talent is an educational and interactive art show featuring six artists completing demonstrations of their expertise, including a live painting performance. Artists are encouraged to interact with the public through a kid's zone art activity, as well as allowing those interested in their work to observe and ask questions about their artistry. So come and join us. It is a lot of fun. I got to go this past Saturday. We're gonna have the big kickoff next, now, the second Saturday in February, and it's gonna be a lot of fun. So everybody's welcome. Congratulations to the 22 organizations recipients of the Mayor's Matching Grants. We love to see more and more people involved, because I know those monies go to good use. So thank you for being involved. And I just had a question, Commissioner Hill, was that a football belt or a wrestling belt? Because it looked like both.
No, that's a championship belt.
Yeah, that's all I have, thank you.
The hate is real.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Stewart.
Thank you, mayor. And congratulations, mayor, and congratulations to Commissioner Sheehan and Commissioner Ortiz. And of course, welcome, Commissioner Burns. Look forward to working with you. Couple of things that happened briefly, and we'll kind of get to the consent agenda, is that we cut the ribbon on Harriet's Orlando Ballet Center last week. It was great. Commissioner Sheehan and mayor were there. It was, it's wonderful to see that come out of the ground. It's gonna be a great asset. They've got a gala coming up. They've raised all the money to pay for it, which is great news, and now they're raising money to sustain it, which is additional great news. Something a little different than most of the organizations that are in there. So it's gonna be a great asset over there in Lock Haven Park. And that leads me to the Mayor's Matching Grant. We have several in there that work out of District Three, but they work citywide. The French Festival, Michelle Lee Puppets, Orlando Museum of Art, Orlando Rowing Club serve our citywide, and they happen to be in my district. I'm really thrilled about what we're doing with the Mayor's Matching Grant. Mayor, every time we get a chance to do it, I get a chance to say thank you for continuing that, because it means so much to our community, and so much to community building, and so much to the things that we get a chance to do. So thank you for doing that. A special congratulations to Commissioner Tony Ortiz for taking on the presidency of the Tri-County League of Cities. Thank you. I'm excited about you taking that lead and looking forward to continuing to serve there. Couple of quick things I'll share, and then we will break ground in March on the 15,000-square-foot gymnasium in the Rosemont Neighborhood Center. This is gonna be an incredible addition. We had a meeting with the community a couple of days ago. Got a chance to kind of tell what we're doing. We're really excited about what's going on, and so look for groundbreaking in March. Want to mention Lou Gardens. We have a couple of weeks left in their Nature of the Game special exhibit. Come out and get a chance to see that. The weather's gonna be great next couple of days, and then please enjoy that. And then this weekend is one of the top events in the southeast called Otronicon. It's the 15th Annual Otronicon to highlight technology and STEM and STEAM learning in our community. So please come out, get a chance to do it. It'll be from the 17th through the 20th this weekend. Other things on the agenda, let me say a special thanks to Orange County Commissioner Uribe, thank you for being here today, and we get a chance to partner with you again. Appreciate that on B8. And then on K4, we're gonna do something special. We've done it a couple of other schools in my district, and that is we're gonna be doing some special decorative fencing. It was important to me to make sure that some of the frontage of all these schools are consistent throughout the entire district, and so we've done that through District Three. Prince Elementary is the latest addition to that, and we will complete that. And with that, mayor, I'd like to go ahead and move the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Stewart, second by Commissioner Sheehan. All in favor of the motion indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and so the motion carries. Congratulations, all you Matching Grant Award winners. We will take about a one-minute recess just to let the folks go figure out how to spend their money. Commissioner Uribe, as a courtesy, I'll let you talk now for a couple of minutes if you need to, or you all set with staff, or... Nice.
Oh, yeah.
That's pretty fabulous.
It's already, yeah, it's already docked.
This year, actually, we started a festival program, the 1910s.
Okay.
Where's that?
So please feel free to come by and...
Thank you.
Point at the mayor while you're standing.
Thank you, guys. Okay, just lay it right there, it's perfect. All right, Commissioner Uribe, did you want to address us or not? No? Okay. Thank you for your consideration on the TDT tomorrow. Then Commissioner Aings, we see you lurking in the back there. Have you got your office cleaned out yet?
Oh.
Saying hi. All right. Hearings ordinances on second reading, Madam Clerk, number one.
Ordinance 2019-62, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida, amending the Florida Hospital Health Village Plan Development Zoning Ordinance to add approximately 2.1 acres of land to the planned development zoning district. Such land being generally located east of I-4, west of Mills Avenue, and south of Wilkinson Street, providing a conforming legal description and map of health village composition and development criteria, providing for severability, correction of scribners' errors, permit disclaimer, and effective date.
Motion by Commissioner Stewart, second by Commissioner Ortiz. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify regarding this matter? Discussion among commissioners. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number two, Madam Clerk.
Ordinance 2020-2, an ordinance of the Code of the City of Orlando, Florida, relating to the business tax taxing schedule, specifically amending section 36.35 entitled "enumeration" to provide for a reduced business tax levy for automated teller machines, providing legislative findings and for codification, correction of scribners' errors, severability, and effective date.
So move.
Second.
Commissioner Hill, that was yours.
Oh. I just...
No.
Wait, no, that wasn't, because it...
It was the ATM.
It was the ATM one.
We're reducing the cost of the ATM fees.
Somehow the, somehow that other one got skipped. That would have been ordinances, second reading number two, got skipped somehow. And then there was the PD for Florida Hospital.
Wait a minute, which one? Okay, let's slow down here. Which ordinance did you just read, Madam Clerk?
ATM.
I did 2020-2.
Yeah, that's number two.
I did first reading.
That's number two.
2020-2?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So we need to go back to...
Everybody clear? Well, let's, we can go ahead and do that one.
Okay.
Everybody clear that we just did ordinances on first read, number two, ordinance 2020-2 related to ATMs, business tax levy? Everybody good? Okay. Anybody from the public want to testify on that? Discussion among commissioners. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. We need to go back to 2019-64.
Right.
Which is the second one on the second reads.
I wondered if they had gotten deferred or something, so are they...
I got it.
Okay, cool.
2019-64, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida, rezoning certain land generally located west of North Division Avenue between Grove Park Drive and West Central Boulevard, comprised of .94 acres of land, more or less, from urban activity center with the traditional city and Paramore heritage overlay districts to the planned development district with the traditional city and Paramore heritage overlay districts, providing a development plan and special land development regulations. The planned development district providing for severability, correction of scribners' errors, permit disclaimer, and effective date.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Sheehan. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify relating to this matter? Discussion among commissioners. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Okay, now we're on ordinances, first read, number one. 2019-62.
2019-62, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida, amending the Florida Hospital Health Village Plan Development Zoning Ordinance to add approximately 2.1 acres of land to the planned development zoning district. Such land being generally located east of I-4, west of Mills Avenue, and south of Wilkinson Street, providing conforming legal description and map of health village composition and development criteria, providing for severability, correction of scribners' errors, permit disclaimer, and effective date.
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Sheehan. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify relating to this matter? Discussion among commissioners. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Okay, now we're on ordinances, first read, number one. 2019-62.
2019-62, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida, amending the Florida Hospital Health Village Plan Development Zoning Ordinance to add approximately 2.1 acres of land to the planned development zoning district. Such land being generally located east of I-4, west of Mills Avenue, and south of Wilkinson Street, providing conforming legal description and map of health village composition and development criteria, providing for severability, correction of scribners' errors, permit disclaimer, and effective date.
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Stewart, second by Commissioner Ortiz. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify relating to this matter? Discussion among commissioners. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Okay, we've already done number twos, so we're on number three.
Ordinance 2020-3, an ordinance of the City of Orlando, Florida, amending chapter 53 of the Code of the City of Orlando entitled Municipal Public Service Tax, deleting section 53.04b1 to remove the exemption for purchases of alternative fuel to be consistent with applicable Florida statutes, renumbering section 53.04b, providing for severability, codification, and effective date.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Sheehan. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify relating to this matter? Discussion among commissioners. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. And number four.
Ordinance 2020-5, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida, amending chapter 39 of the City Code regarding hours and days of operation of parking meters and parking meter technology, providing legislative findings and for severability, codification, correction of scribners' errors, and effective date.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Sheehan, second by Commissioner Hill. Is there anyone from the public would like to testify related to this matter? Discussion among commissioners. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and so the motion carries. That concludes the official business of the Orlando City Council for today.